Okay.
Yeah, where's your drug?
It's road down the curve.
Same with us.
Thanks Dana. All right, welcome to our Murfreesboro City Council meeting, August the 6th, 2015. Councilmember Aides Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. We pray that you continue to bless us with our needs. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Mayor, before we get started, I have an announcement to make. Yesterday was your birthday and I want the world to know about it. So happy birthday.
Very much.
No, we're not.
No, we don't do that.
By popular demand.
That's exactly right. Well, thank you very much.
Happy birthday Mayor. Are you 25?
I am.
That's what I thought.
Yep, I am 25. Tomorrow's my anniversary, which means that my birthday means absolutely nothing. We'll move into consent agenda. You have four different items on your consent agenda.
If there's no comments, I move that we approve them as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Schreit, we call it a roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move into third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ38 to amend the conditions applicable to an area located along the west side of San Peters Drive in the Evergreens Farm PRD.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Schreit.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15OZ39 to rezone an area located along the east side of South Highland Avenue to single-family residential for RS4 District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Schreit.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on second reading, excuse me, moving to second readings, consider for passage on second reading ordinance 15OZ41 to rezone an area located along Joby Jackson Parkway to Heavy Industrial HI District.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, we call it a roll.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll move into new business and we'll hear from the Transportation Director in regards to the Cherry Lane Extension Project.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of council. I wanted to come to you this evening and talk about the Cherry Lane Extension Project Phase Three. I know I've met with several of y'all and discussed this project and we were talking basically about the alternatives that were discussed at the public meeting that was held some time back. This project has had, you know, pretty long history, going back 2003. The Cherry Lane Project was a project that was adopted in the 2025 Major Thoroughfare Plan and our public meeting was held on December the 14th, so we have spent some time in various phases of the project bringing that to where that is this evening. The current project budget for the project is about 34 million with currently the federal government or our federal funding allocations paying approximately 13% and the city paying 87%. We will be looking to increase the federal share and decrease the local federal share should the opportunity present itself. A part of moving the project development to the next stage is to adopt a preferred alignment from the three alignments that were presented at the December 14th public meeting. The alignment selection is a component addressed in the overall environmental document and I have handed you out a copy of that this evening. I do have that for public presentation purposes to put up on the screen because I know there's a lot of interest. Very good. I promise you I do not have a slideshow. That is my only illustration for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lord.
And based on the analysis of the pros and cons of one of the alignment, one alignment versus the other, our project engineers made a recommendation with the concurrence of staff to recommend that alternative alignment number three be presented to both T-Dot and the Federal Highway Administration. This is the alignment, the northernmost alignment that you would see on the screen. And alignment number three does not require the acquisition of any improved properties or relocations and provides a superior design option in respect to geometry and the separation of intersections, which is an important issue for us. I wanted to point out that any alignment that we recommend is ultimately subject to the approval of the Department of Transportation and then the Federal Highway Administration is a function of approval of the environmental document. So this is our recommendation. I did want to address while I was here, one additional issue and that is that there been some who've actually questioned the need for the project. In the Cherry Lane Public Meeting of December the 14th, there were several who commented that if we widened Thompson Lane that we would not need this project. Ironically, during the public meeting for the Thompson Lane Project, there were several who commented that if we built Cherry Lane that we wouldn't need to widen Thompson Lane. So that is a matter of perspective based on where people live. The fact is, we need both to accommodate the long-term growth of Murfreesboro. And planning is always an ongoing effort and people who don't regularly deal in the demographics that we do sometime have a hard time, I think, translating projected population growth into traffic. We are, as Rob had mentioned earlier before the meeting, in the process of formulating a 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which includes a 2040 Plan for the transportation system within and around the city. Sometimes the easiest way is to visualize the future is to think about the past and as such I'll try to kind of convey the need for both projects in those terms. And that term would be that the year 2040 is no further in front of us than 1990 is behind us. Basically 25-year gaps in time. And kind of thinking back on what that means is back in 1990, I'd already been working for the city for five years, having first child. I mean, time has moved on very quickly. Mayor McFarland, you may have been looking for a date for the prom back in 1990, but...
It's gonna be a bad knock.
No, it isn't.
But some, so, you know, sometimes this is the easiest way to visualize things is not trying to figure out what things will look like in the future, but looking back and seeing how things were. And in 1990, the population of the city of Murfreesboro was approximately 45,000 residents. Today, 25 years later, the population is approximately 120,000 residents, a substantial number, amount of growth. In 1990, and put this in perspective of road projects, in 1990, several sections of both Norfield and Rutherford that we all had been enjoying for years were just then being completed. State Route 840 did not exist. I-24 to, I-840 was just opened in 1995 or 96. State Route 840 between I-24 was not, or, you know, was open in 2001. I-24 through Murfreesboro is a four-lane interstate. Barfield Crescent Road up by the park was a two-lane road. None of the Medical Center Parkway existing and Loki Avenue between Broad and Memorial was just a two-lane road. The I-24 interchanges that we have today with State Route 99, Joby Jackson Parkway and Medical Center Parkway did not exist. A list of another 65 smaller projects that we have done since that time in Murfreesboro did not exist at that point in time. The point is this though, that can you imagine what Murfreesboro would be like today if we still did not have State Route 840, still only had two interchanges with I-24 and none of the other projects mentioned? We would be dealing with today's population of approximately 120,000 and traffic volumes with a 1990's roadway network. Therefore, the same is true with 2040, 25 years into the future, if we try to accommodate a population projected to be approximately 260,000 with a 2025 roadway network that we have today. That's more than double today's population accommodated by today's infrastructure. And that is, that's why the city attempts to plan for the growth and actively pursue these long-range capital projects that take many years to bring to fruition to help alleviate both the existing and future projected traffic congestion. So the future, the existing, future projected growth is the basis for the city moving forward to construct both the Thompson Lane and the Cherry Lane improvements. So I hope that that little perspective helps. Sometime it is easier to put that in perspective when you think back in the same timeframe about the things you remember as opposed to maybe trying to visualize what things may be in the future. So I appreciate that opportunity to make those comments and certainly be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Dana, on page five, there's an example of a typical section of roadway.
Yes.
When we present this to the state, is that how we present it? Because if it is, I sure wish we could break the mold. And by saying that, there's some way that we have to get bicycles out of the roadway. We, the roadway is not a place for pedestrians and there's no scenario in which we want a 12-year-old child riding down Memorial Boulevard or Thompson Lane on a bicycle. And if we could just ride over to Franklin, I mean, I don't mean to sound like Franklin envy here, but let's go over and look at Carruthers and look at where they've got a 10-lane or 10-foot wide asphalt section running along the roadway that's set back off the roadway about four, four to six feet it looks like, that does the same purpose as a sidewalk, although it's only on one side, but it doesn't require any more roadway width than what we're currently proposing here. If we continue to do this, the outcome is going to be terrible because there's just no scenario at which bicycles need to be mixed into the flow of traffic. And it, and we're encouraging it. We look at the future. Everything says that we're going to see more people trying to beat live within their modes and be within their neighborhoods and pods and all the terminology that they use now for purposes of saying that we're going to become more village-like, I guess. And we need to try and present to the state, I think, examples of what we would like it to be like rather than this traditional thing because I know we've got Thompson Lane looking the very same way. And I'm just not sure that the future of roadways as far as what we need to be designing and what we're presenting are one in the same.
And agreed. And just to follow up on that, subsequent to especially the Thompson Lane Meeting, I've had several conversations with the state of Tennessee. We're actually actively looking at that as an alternative to that. Even though that this is shown as a typical section in this report in the early part, I think that it would be very easy to construct an alternative using a bike path as opposed to sidewalk and bike lanes on the road and within the same right-of-way and footprint and within the same impacts where we're going with the road. So I think that that is something that you're going to see. We've, like I said, we've had several of those conversations with T-Dot and we're looking some. And of course, you know, a lot of that's looking at the details of how we're going to accommodate this. Obviously, if you build a bike path on one side of the road, people have to cross to act, you know, to access it.
Right.
So there's several options with that and I want to assure you that those are things that are very much being looked at and appreciate those comments. I would tend to agree that if we do have reasonable alternatives to building the bike lanes off the road instead of on a high-speed arterial roadway adjacent to the vehicular traffic, that especially one that has a lot of trucks, that that would be a very reasonable alternative. So thank you for those comments.
Dana, with the knowledge that we don't know what the state's going to do and we've been waiting on Salem Pike and been promised that for maybe 10 years now, is there a way for the city to build sections of this at a time, every two years build a section and build another section to a designated mark and then maybe you could get the state to build the interchange?
There's all kinds of alternatives. One of the reasons that this is being initiated under a federal complacency is that if we make this a project that is compliant and all the steps are done in accordance with the state and federal regulations, that we can actually capture any monies in the future that may become available and applied to the project. As opposed to having started the process under just the city's process and then trying to, even if somebody came up with $10 million, it, they would tell you that, no, we cannot apply to it because you did not follow the federal guidelines in project implementation. So this is a project that we're absolutely looking forward to capturing future dollars over the years from the federal funding sources and/or the state if they come around. Currently, the state has no money in this project, but that absolutely doesn't prohibit us from pursuing funds if they become available. We've done it for years.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Dana, what do you think the chances are? I mean, I don't, what I think's going to happen, but in the next legislature when they meet, do you think that we'll see a property tax increase that will start generating some revenue for road construction rather than just road maintenance?
Pursuing, you're talking about gas tax?
Gas tax.
Well, as you well know, that the Governor and Commissioner are doing tours right now and in fact I tried to get Murfreesboro scheduled day and send out an email when they will actually be here. They are trying to provide, I think, the public information about why that's necessary and to see if they can get support for that. I absolutely hope that that may be possible through the state system. The federal system as far as the gas tax is concerned, I'm not hopeful that anything will be done through that based on the recent past, but hopefully the Governor will be successful in implementing some kind of increase that will provide us some help to get out of the hole that we're in. Highway 99 is a great example of a project that has been shelved by the Department of Transportation. It's ready to go to construction and be bid to borrow, but the funding is just not there to move forward with it. So we not only will see that project, but things like Thompson Lane, for instance, even though they're not ready to go to construction today and they don't need the big money, sooner or later in the next several years, we have been at a point where it's been designed, the right-of-way's been acquired and it's ready to go to construction and we're sitting there and saying, we don't have the funds. So I hope that he is successful and I appreciate his efforts in trying to do something with this issue.
Now, obviously for communities that aren't growing, it doesn't matter because maintenance is fine, but in communities like Murfreesboro that are growing, we absolutely have to build the infrastructure and have it in place for tomorrow. And without that gas tax, I really don't think that we'll see those, any potential of these roads being built. But I appreciate your efforts and what you're doing to try and pursue the needed roadways.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You know, the biggest fear is that we are in situations where we can't afford to get behind the curb on building our roads and our, you know, for economic development and for our citizens. And, you know, if the state does not figure some way to help with the issue, then it pushes it back on to our residents and they end up bearing the cost more than what we already are bearing. So hopefully it'll be something that the state can help with. I know we can't afford to go get any further behind on road building than we already are.
That is, that is true.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Want to be approved, Alternative Three?
To accept his report.
Well, do we need a, do we need a motion to agree with the third option?
We're not required to do that. But I would certainly appreciate if the council would make an endorsement of our recommendation.
I move for approval of the preferred alternative.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit.
Ms. Kells Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Prom, thank you. Well, now here our monthly report on the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport.
Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for this opportunity to come before you to talk about the latest improvements, projects and developments that are occurring at our airport. I guess I'd like to start out with the staff and just with, just like all the other city departments, the airport continues to be blessed with dedicated employees. The airport staff consists of one airport manager and six part-time employees with two of them being the airport secretary and airport operations assistant. They are tremendous help and greatly appreciated by our customers. As we continue to update and modernize our various accounting systems and other programs, Jennifer Hurst and Kent Scholes are mastering the new systems very quickly. In the future, when the airport budget can support it, a change in airport staffing will need to occur as we add an additional full-time staff member. While this is something that might be justifiable now, we need to find the means by which to do that in the future. Commercial operators, as of this summer, we now have five commercial operators, businesses at the airport that are conducting airport services to our customers. These five operators employ over 77 employees, which many include highly trained mechanics, pilots, avionics experts, and even now flight nurses and paramedics. As you know, Air Methods is our latest company to locate at the airport, providing air ambulance service to Vanderbilt Trauma Center in Nashville. We hope to be reviewing their site plans soon to their new facility at the airport on the north side of the airport. They are operating at the airport in a temporary quarters until then. The other commercial operators include Murfreesboro Aviation, Executive Air Express, which is a charter service, Mike Jones Avionics in Maintenance and Milton Tennessee State University. These companies not only provide service to pilots in Murfreesboro and the surrounding area, but Executive Air and Mike Jones, for example, are providing services and go to all places to, from North America to South America. Air Methods is one of not the largest air ambulance services in the nation, then they are near the top of the most active airlines in the nation. And the students that come from Milton Tennessee State University's Aerospace Department are working for our military, airlines, airports, and FAA in locations around the world. We have a customer base which many airports and communities are very envious of. Please understand aviation is a very difficult industry, which is heavily regulated, has extremely high overhead costs, and seems to always be fluctuating. These commercial operators and the Airport Commission have a difficult task of trying to balance these industry variables and continue to maintain these services on the field. Meanwhile, we've had a number of successful projects going on. MTSU just completed the construction of the latest building on their airport campus. The new 60-by-60 building will house the department's various aircraft simulators, provide an additional classroom and several briefing rooms for their instructor pilots and students. The university took a very small building and created a unique and attractive facility that should assist many students with their training for years to come. The runway project. Nighttime closures on the airport began May 18th. Since then, LoJack, the contractor, and their subcontractors have been working on and off again 24-hour shifts. While this project has been called the Runway Extension Project, it truly has many more components and improvements that are a part of this project. These improvements include new runway and taxiway connectors, which will more, will strategically locate connectors to the runway according to FAA standards. The old airfield lighting has been removed and all new LED fixtures are being installed. The system will include the latest standard of aircraft approach guidance systems and airport and pilot-controlled lighting. Another great improvement is the stormwater drainage system. The city engineering department and Huddleston Steel Engineering did a fabulous job several years ago creating a drainage area on the north end of the airport with a capacity of future development for the airport in mind. With this in place, our Atkins engineers were able to create a concrete-lined drainage system that will be able to properly move the water off the surfaces per FAA specifications. A benefit to working with a great team of contractors, engineers, state and city representatives during these projects are some of the small improvements that we're able to complete during these projects. Something that necessarily wasn't in the specs, but something we came across during the project. During this project, we noticed a potential issue with the existing drainage ditches that come from McKnight Park and transition under the airport's west line of security fence. The ditches are always been difficult to maintain and with new slopes in place, the maintenance of these ditches is going to be even worse. We were able to find a solution which included extending the drainage lines under the fence and adding dirt and soil and covering the areas up. This improves the safety to both the parks and rec and airport personnel that maintain those dishes, ditches, and makes it safer and better looking for the people who use and enjoy McKnight Park. We're even able to secure some state funding to offset some of the cost. Runway 1836 has been closed since Monday. Will be back open Sunday, August 23rd at 8:00 AM. 20 days. We are uncertain what length we will be operating the runway at when we open back up as LoJack will still have some work at various parts of the runway. We should be back to night operations at that time as well. We will really not have full use of the runway until the FAA designs and publishes the new approaches for the new extended runway in the coming months. Keep in mind that June and July were record-studying months for rainfall as we received over 13 inches of rain those two months. It is impressive that LoJack has been able to get as much done as they have. And Mr. Smotherman, I know when we were talking about this project, there was one concern about erosion control. And there was a company out there, the sub is called One Erosion and Elise Friend is the owner of that business. And she set up an impressive array of the latest standards for all the erosion control. And one of the storms that we had around the 4th of July, she was out there that weekend because she woke up in the middle of the night concerned that all those, you know, stopgaps and erosion controls and sediment controls were going to take and stay in place during that storm. And I caught her out there that morning making sure they were all in place. So she did a wonderful job. In preparing for the spring and summer of construction, the Airport Commission prepared for the worst-case scenario for very low fuel sales, knowing that we would lose night operations and would be, and would be closed for 20 days or more. Looking at the number of gallons of aviation fuels that we have sold the months of May through July, which has been the period which we've had the night closures, you can see we actually sold a couple of thousand more gallons than we did the last two years. I'd prepared pictures for you this presentation, but really I feel that it would be best if you came out to see it. It's quite impressive, the last couple of days, LoJack has had a number, just a great number of pieces of equipment. Mr. Young came out with his granddaughters the other day and took a little tour. I think one of the granddaughters may have been more impressed with the minivan than all the trucks and semis and all that, but we, we had a good time. The future of capital improvements and we just, Dana kind of, kind of covered it in a little bit of transportation and equity funding. The airport side of this has had a little bit different scenario happen to it here recently. The future of capital improvement projects at the Murfreesboro Airport and airports across the state of Tennessee has recently changed dramatically. Since 1986, our airports have enjoyed the use of the Tennessee Aviation Fuel Equity Fund, which used tax revenues from aviation fuels sold in Tennessee to make impro- Fund, which used tax revenues from aviation fuels sold in Tennessee to make improvements at the air carrier and general aviation airports across the state. This was a pure use tax. Companies and individuals that used the system the most paid the most into the system. Recent legislation that was approved this spring put a cap on the amount any individual or company would be required to pay into the system. The Tennessee Aviation Fuel Equity Fund has fluctuated with fuel prices through the years, but has been up to as much as $50 million in recent years. The major contributor to this fund is Federal Express, based in Memphis, Tennessee. FedEx has contributed 65% to 75% of the overall fund on an annual basis. Where FedEx contributed in the ballpark of $38 to $42 million annually, they will be contributing a max of $10.5 million each year. Along with this legislation, a second amendment was added, which formed a task force to study how airports could be funded after this change. The task force is comprised of 15 individuals representing various state agencies, state-elected officials, and community leaders. The task force also has two representatives from the Tennessee Air Carrier Association and two representatives from the Tennessee Aviation Association. John Black, the executive director of the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority, and Joanne Spear, the airport manager at Union City Airport, are representatives on this task force. As an officer and member of the Tennessee Aviation Association, I'm very much involved in TA's preparation for this task force meeting, which will be occurring over the next several months. This legislation cuts annual funding for airport improvement projects nearly in half. Projects such as the construction of hangars and new ramps or runway extensions may be a thing of the past. The focus will be on the maintenance of our pavement, approaches, and airfield lighting and navigation aids. To make matters worse, with low prices, revenues from the aviation fuel tax are well below previous estimates. The Tennessee Aeronautics Division is making dramatic cuts in this year's funding of projects and their educational promotional programs. This means that we may see future projects that will require more than the typical 5% or 10% local share. Future hangar construction projects or new ramps may have to be funded through other sources than through the Aeronautics Commission. Unless other funds are identified by the task force for use by airports for capital improvements, airports and their communities will be looking for other grants to fund these projects. My fear, which is also shared by many of my colleagues, is that some small communities not, may not be able to maintain their local airport. This will impact the community's commerce and economic development and decrease the overall ability of the Tennessee's system of airports. The Murfreesboro Airport Commission will be working on this issue and making adjustments to our capital improvement plans. In the meantime, as the city manager has shared with you, the Airport Commission is moving forward with its plans for replacement of the terminal building. A design team is being gathered and will be meeting Monday afternoon to be briefed on the process and ask for their expertise and assistance in at least this design process. It is our goal that the new facility represent this dynamic community for which it serves, and it conveys that message to all that pass through it. We have discussed this project with Tennessee Aeronautics and are working with their staff to secure at least some funding before these projects are no longer eligible. There are also two areas that have been identified in the airport's capital improvement plans for future ramp, taxiways, and hangars. One area is on the north end of the field where the new taxiway Echo is being constructed and future home of Air Methods hangar and office facility will be located. Our next step in that area is to establish a plan locating where all the utilities should go and proper layout of the taxiways and hangars. This is also the area for the future MTSU airport campus expansion. The second area is south of the terminal area of the corporate box hangars. We have a customer that is contemplating expansion of their facilities. All the utilities are in place, but there will be some need for additional ramp and a change in location of some fencing and ramp excess. These are all certainly exciting projects which we are preparing for. The Airport Commission's job has not gotten any easier with this change in airport funding. I believe that with your assistance, with all the talent that we have in our various city departments, and with the excellent state project managers and consulting teams, we will find a way to continue to provide an airport that can respond to and serve the needs of this community, and it can take pride in. Thank you again for this opportunity to share the latest happenings at the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Any questions for Mr. Gerke? Exciting stuff?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Okay, we'll move into board and commission appointments. We have reappointments. Ms. McGannan, can we do these all at once?
Yes.
Okay. Would like to ask Mr. Crumley if it's okay have Chris Wilkerson?
Just leave it on the desk for next meeting.
Okay. Chris Wilkerson for the Senior Citizen Commission. And it may be, if everyone, if there's no objection, instead of waiting in the next meeting, since we already have four people, is to go ahead and appoint, if you wouldn't mind, so we would add Chris Wilkerson to the reappointments for the Senior Citizen Commission for Phil Lance, Charles Parker, Nancy Vaughn, and Brandon Wallace. Reappointments to the Water and Sewer Board, Dr. Alphonse Carter, Jr. Reappointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Julie R. P. King and Francis Mosby. The Historical Zoning Commission, Gilbert Backland, Deborah Belcher, Paul Cross and Mary Mae White. Planning Commission, Bob Lamb and Ken Halliburton. Board of Electrical Examiners, Philip Lim. Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Lyle Lynch and Ryan Maloney.
Mayor, I move we accept the recommendations, your recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We have a few beer permits?
We do. We have six convenience stores that are changing ownership from a Kangaroo branding to a Circle K stores branding. So, those six have met our requirements, and we are now waiting for their building codes inspections to be completed. Then we also have a restaurant that is applying for a combined retail permit under our new permitting. And this is a location that's had beer there before, but this is a new owner and a different name. And it also has met our background check requirements, but we are waiting for the building codes inspections to be completed. And would like to issue those permits with your approval upon their completing their inspections.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll move into payment of statements.
We don't have a list for you tonight.
That's good. It's like going to the mail and opening it up, and there's no bills in there.
We have bills, but under our new paying requirements, we're able to pay those without coming back to you because they already have contracts, you've already seen them, for those that are over the $25,000. I don't have any tonight that are not in that range.
Any other business from the staff or the City Council?
What a fantastic job the Police, Fire Department, and Recreation Department did with National Night Out this past week. So proud of what they did, establishing theirself in the communities and connecting to the communities with the parks. They did a fantastic job, and we appreciate their efforts.
Fantastic. Have two quick things. One, want to give a, or a, just some kind words. I'm out the soccer field quite a bit, and I have not ever seen as much work that's going on on the soccer field than what's going on right now. And last night at 8:15, our Parks and Recreation staff, they were still out there working, Mr. Whitworth and his team. So, you know, it was 93 degrees at 8 o'clock last night, and they were still out there working. So, it's coming along, and feel pass on how good of a job that they're doing.
Glad to.
The city attorney position closed on Monday, and I think we ended up with 30?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three applicants. And so, Mr. Godwin has worked up a timeline to keep, or not a timeline, but sort of a how we'll move forward from there on reviewing those. And some of them automatically don't meet the requirements that we had listed in our specification, so we'll weed those out and then be sending those to you hopefully this next week. And then, on your consent agenda tonight, we approve the request for proposals.
Competitive seal proposals.
Competitive seal proposals for the search firm. So, in conjunction, while the search that is out on the street, we can look at the qualified applicants that we have that have applied.
How will that work, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it's funny you ask that. I'll pull that up. Mr. Lyons, you don't have that. Let me pull up my file here. It's not pulling up, but, oh, here it is. Yep. So, the inner, what we'll have, as this is pulling up, the, got it right here. Sorry. So, the city, on June the Fourth, we went through, and we had the job questionnaire that we've all filled out, the job description with approval range, the copy of the city manager employment agreement. We did the competency identification recruitment profile, so that's all the things that we did to be able to get it out on the street. The next stage will be to go through, now that it's closed, we've been reviewing the candidates, review all the applicants of those meeting minimum qualifications versus failing the minimum qualifications. The city employee review now, we'll make sure that everything meets the requirements to go to the City Council to determine if it warrants an interview. And then, there would be a preliminary interview for all meeting the minimum qualifications to make sure that those individuals are still interested. And then, from there, we'll go through with a first interview, and then, that which is the one we just talked about, and the second one will be done by the City Council. And if we decide to do that over Skype or sort of a multi-rater interview, so what will happen is that will be the mayor, the council, city manager, city staff, and then also something that we talked about was a community panel that we would also put together to review those. So, between the three groups, you know, hopefully, we'll end up with some good qualified applicants. And this will go out to you on the recruitment strategy. Mr. Godwin is finalizing that, so hopefully, that'll give us a good game plan. Let me see, anything, Mr. Lyons?
Did what?
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right, we'll stand adjourned.